Welcome to the United States of America. The true republic of which is theirs. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all from Jennifer Swartz. While they're flying past here, all from Annette Agar here, all from the San Diego.
I have not received a call from you. I have the other. Central of the sentence.
Hello, good morning.
Won't you make a statement on favor?
Aye.
Vote. Go back. Okay, but then I have a subpoena.
No, I'm taking.
Resolution for our conservation bank say you should. My bad side, he's agreed to the legal all time, this time text. And then, since the twenty-three of we should be able to tell it all. Anybody got problems there? And we need to make a motion to that.
I like a motion for this.
Won't you make a statement on favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Okay, now, you do the ordinance. There's all kind of things going on. If anybody's thinking that I'm trying to do a way to get down now. There's just a few things that needs to be to fill our city. Get what's in him or just the few things that they got nerves. That don't contain, but. And everybody else, if they got anything, they got a problem. You know, if they see anything. One of the first ones of. Is sixteen year old. You agree that holding up the drop in this city is a bad thing in the world?
If they have driver's license.
I just wait, and I think I thought we young gonna be out there with people on, but they have the same right to have a piece of kid on them as anybody else. I mean, I think it's all young. If the board feel that it's okay.
How would they figure out though?
Sixteen, but they got restrictions. Through the give life, and I forget how long, I don't know. Or if it's okay, then.
Well, I think. There's water and certain on it. With that police officer, he can take care of his car and come up. You know, they could be sixteen to drive it, just like you can't drive. But they're gonna have to let them rule, just like they do survive the car.
Yep, and I think they should have driver's license.
I do too. That's my thought.
Now, it's okay. I better don't have a great problem with it, I just want a question and see what the board felt about it. Eight sixteen year old kids, it's great. And eight twenty year old kids working sixteen year old kids. You see what it go by age and the individual stuff. If you got a law of police department, then they have to decide. They, I don't have nothing to do with the helmet and everything, I don't see it happening. Young kids wearing helmets, they should be on and they side to side, and should be enforced, and I, I don't want to change nothing like that. And the flag is not being given very much, but it's gotta be enforced. And the only thing I'm wanting changed on the flag. Is it actually meet the conservation department rules? And they got a certain height, you know, and everything. Cause you got people that take advantage and say you gotta have a flag, and you put a little big flag up there. And I got a flag.
Well, that's.
All right, for the conservation, what they require. David has, I think.
It's either back at their.
I think that.
It's seventy two.
But not seventy two inches, it's from the ground or something, I mean, low part of the thing. It ain't seventy two inches above you. And usually it's about two fifty, three foot above you be able to. I would like for that to be in the. Ordinance.
Seventy two inches or for three foot above the roof?
I, as long as it's two or no more than, I mean, you don't have any more than two, at least. But they would, I think they require three, don't they?
Illinois says three above the roof, the reserve conservation says seventy two inches taller.
Ain't that from the ground?
I don't know.
I think we need to say this. However, two or three foot, whatever we want it to be above.
Yeah, it just says.
That way it's not, there's no gray area there. You can go in your, uh, ride and throw it a flop a little bit, but it won't get to that thing. I got one of seventy two on mine. And it, I had to grab it and hold it back when I go in my ride, but then. So we wanna say two foot above the top roof?
Yep.
Okay.
Would you sign on the flag itself? Because.
They're just, they're standard when you.
I'm saying is they're.
They're usually about that tall, and about that long, and they get weathered, beaten, and. But everyone I've ever bought was almost the same size. I grew out a few of them, with limbs and that. But what, what do they think?
What they say is, uh, at least seventy two square inches, six by nine.
Would you dad draw me out, want them to know what they're talking about? If you could draw me out the picture.
As long as it's a standard, one that you buy at the store, I don't see.
And the ones I got recognized by the conservation department, that's where you buy them. I don't think we need to.
Okay.
We can put in there what it comes.
With the conservation.
Recognize it, but they're about the same size. Uh, now this one here that they got number six, we got it. Then it come out. Unless the court provides a turn indicator, I don't agree with us having stop and drives in town or. Before some lines are at the dark. We don't have a police department, we can't handle, that's a different crowd. And I think it should be taken.
David, is that what they originally agreed on?
Yes, I know you.
Dust to dust, or dust to dunn? You don't have any.
When y'all were trying to get a flag before, that's what tend to stay. I heard it. And I agree with it.
I do too. We don't even have to do it at dark.
Okay.
It gets dark by nine o'clock.
Do, how many of you agree?
I don't have a problem with it, cause if you go over to the island and you come home, it's after dark.
I have a problem to come home at the dark. I don't care where you been. And you can't say you can go somewhere at the dark and can't go somewhere without at the dark. At the dark, you need to take it home and get your car. And that's mine, that's, that's the way I see it. And it's so much different than. You be able to out there daytime, you see what's up in front, you know what it is, you know it's side to side, you know. Dark, you don't know what that is, but. And all of them things don't run seventy eight miles an hour. I got one that run maybe sixty, and I got one that won't run over twenty.
Well, I hope nobody's doing seventy in any in town.
Different than the speed makes a difference. How many agree that it should be done, dust to dunn?
I would agree with that, and did you discuss headlights in the daytime all the time?
I don't, I don't know about that, I mean.
I think.
I don't have a problem with it, I mean.
It's kind of a parallel.
Some of them comes on whenever, I think a lot of them comes on when I start mine.
Yeah, I think it's a parallel issue, because we're talking about visibility. And the reason that you don't want them on in the evenings, cause they're not as visible and you can hit them. And in the daytime, I think they should have daytime running lights, so you can see them better. Just like a motorcycle has to have a headlight on during the daytime.
What, they all so? When they're so, did they have it set up that way, or is it?
Well, then.
There may be some.
These, these signs are kind of like computers, every two years they're updated. So, guy got one ten years ago, his daylight may not come on, he thought. You guys got one now, I think I want all of them, mine the old six.
I don't think mine come on until turn on.
Yeah, I.
I know my daylight on it all the time.
They, they should be visible, I, I saw someone here last week, like the couple days after the meeting, they had two kids in the back, and I remember who had helmets on. So.
Well, right now, we don't have no law, so we can make your ordinance, but we can't enforce them till we get laws. But maybe if we got the ordinance and people know them, then we'll, some of them will enforce it. I know.
I mean, if you got kids, you gotta take care of them.
That kind of sense to me, but. But I let mine ride my golf cart in my yard without one on, you know, but. But, I mean, it's in the ordinance, and you gotta put it in there to protect the city. And I mean, that, everybody says you gotta have a helmet that rides this, right there, if you're certain age, and. I don't have a problem believing it, sir, the helmet, I think it should be there. And I'm, I got mine, why I got them riding and using helmets on with, on the golf cart, it don't go too fast. The only thing, my pack get hurt.
I mean, it's, you know, one thing is the ordinance, the other thing is just protecting people from themselves, you know, so. If they say either read that, or you know.
Well, we won't leave the helmet lower in there.
No, absolutely.
I mean. But now, if we want to deal with the headlight thing, that, I don't have.
I'll get it.
Well, I don't have a problem, but I'll tell you something. If I'm out here, knowing you can't see me.
There's problems.
You better use a glass.
Yeah.
Hey, guys, I'm here, you're gonna see me.
But.
You're on two wheels, you're on two wheels.
But I'm, I, there's one ordinance coming up, I wanna talk about that. I don't think it would be an ordinance, a part of the ordinance, you should be losing your permit for. If you forget turning headlights on, but that's another section coming up. It's up to you, the board say, what do you want, headlights or don't, and that's what it's gonna be.
Well, I would make a motion that headlights be on while the vehicle's in use.
That's right. You guys are like a second. Okay, now, but we do agree with the daylight for dust to dunn.
That is one of our original things.
Why no that?
Yeah, I agree.
So, so no headlights?
And all, tougher cities, you got it. And now, I didn't realize they had it in here, that said, unless the equipment lights and thing know dust to dunn. And over here, they say you gotta have all this equipment on it to be on the street. And down here, they say, if you got that, you can be out at the dark. But over here later, some of the requirements, it tells you, you gotta have all this on there to get a permit. So I, I don't understand it. So we will have that on there, dust to dunn, and we just eliminate unless equipped with. Fifty five.
Fifty five.
Right, so, so no headlights for the day, dusted on, do you want to do straight up dusted on, or do you?
There's no headlights, don't have to say anything, cause there's nothing in there on there.
Right.
So, I mean, that just, that don't change the ordinance, and we don't have to put that in.
The, like, like the state, like, when you have the headlights on in your car, I think it's like thirty minutes before or after.
People need a ticket for being out there, and they didn't get one for nine, your light on. If, if the state law requires that, it, it, it's a ticket, yeah.
Okay, I'm moving, all right, I'll just go straight to dusted on, then, all right.
I. What, what do you call it, dunn, thirty minutes, four thirty minutes?
Yeah, yeah. I can do that verbiage in here if you want.
I give you a time.
Yeah, because like, like dust.
Dunn, they can argue, it changes a lot, man.
It changes every day.
But, but that we had thirty minutes. At the sunset, thirty minutes.
I'll, I'll live with the state.
That'd be time, but your sunset's got a time, you can look up the sunset, sun rise anytime today. Okay, now, number eight golf cart. Now, the reason we're doing this too is because it wasn't done before, and it wasn't talked out with our senior alman, that wasn't discussed. And see if it fitted our city, it was, we were doing too fast. Doing a golf cart. Okay, we already got a problem there, but it's gotta be in there. They find no insurance, I don't know if they're gonna find insurance companies gonna do that. Say, can't be guys in there. Perryville's got it in there. And we're gonna have it, and you gotta, your insurance, you gotta say, it's insured on public roads. And I don't think they can get insurance companies in there. Because they're not legal on public roads. I don't care, how many things we pass, they're not recognized by the state to be on public road, even though the city passed. We got a letter, you got one right there? From our own insurance office, said they don't think they know any insurance will save it. And, and Jimmy knows that, Perryville knows it, and we know, but still in the ordinance, they gotta have something to say.
That said what?
That you, your insurance ought to have to say this vehicle would be covered if it's on a public road. Because this is an off-road vehicle.
Yeah, this is in your package.
We buy insurance on the damn thing.
Huh?
You can get insurance.
On their conservation department, private property, and everything. But they are illegal on public roads, according to the state law. And the only one that's not is farmers going from field to field to field, not a transportation, working in the field. That's the only thing the state will. I'm not making it rule, I'm saying it there. It's the law.
I, I emailed our insurance company way back when we were first talking about this, and we see the part two. It says if the city is going to allow it, they must require proof of insurance that clearly, they underline that. Indicates the coverage extends to use on public roads. And we sold a couple of them without getting that. The last guy that came in yesterday, like, you need to have insurance that says that, and they called and says, we can't get our insurance company to say that, you know. So I think we might have a problem.
What I'm reading right here, it says, uh, the city has a liability exposure when they allow ATV's on public roads. Would allow ATV's?
Well, it, it, but it's going on, they're talking about both in there, open on, they're talking about both.
There's a difference.
All right, and that don't get, like, I'm sure they got insurance on. I had a state patrol.
Can't get a sticker to allow my ATV in this town.
I, uh, I had the state patrol tell me, and it's only about anybody here that has. That some cities are gonna get sued, they're gonna have a wreck out there, and somebody going through the city for a lot, and they're gonna win. Because they allow illegal vehicles on the streets. I don't have a problem, I'm telling you, if you wanna let it, just leave it in there and don't enforce it, that's up to the board. It's, it's got to stand there, we're gonna, we got to take the ticket. Now, if you don't enforce it, that's another thing.
If we sit down and go, like, everyone is saying that this town does, this town does, that town does, you might as well shut them down. That's just what's happening.
Well, but they're putting in the protection stuff, but they're not doing it, they're not enforcing. Are you saying we go ahead and let them get the sticker without showing that it be covered with on insurance on the street?
They're gonna have proof, have proof of insurance where it says that. Now, you're probably something we didn't even know.
But you've had that, I talked about that before, the board has had that for four years. That was got four years ago, we leave the date on it.
Six years.
Six years. The board generally had that every time, and brought this up.
I'm not sure.
That's the first time I've seen that.
Well, because everybody, the board president, never hang up, and then they wanted it. I'm, I'm putting a fine star here for this board. I'm here, I run to protect the city, I run to help the city, and that's all I wanna do, if, I don't know if insurance will pay off or not. The opinion of our insurance is they will not. But, they, they be doing, they, they got their own. I assume they don't ask no questions when they give out stickers, I don't know. But that don't make you innocent when something happens. Perryville do it. But that do, whenever you have a rep or something, that don't make you innocent. I mean, we can do the same thing they do, turn blind eyes.
Well, if we don't, then what? If we don't turn the blind eye, you might as well shut them down like I said, that's what you're doing.
Then.
You shut them down.
That's not what I'm trying to do.
That's what's gonna happen. You can't get insurance to sue, what you're saying, you can't.
Well, what you're saying in there, that's why, for them, if a car gets out there with no insurance, they're illegal. And now, these guys come out here, they ain't got no insurance on these streets, they've only got them. On a public road, or, and, Jennifer got one. And I bet you, her insurance won't pay off if she hit somebody out here on the street. Because that's what they say, they will not pay off. But now, if she has a rep on it, on private property, conservation places, places where they're allowed, it'll pay. Yeah, you can answer, stay up, all that too.
But, answer me.
I'm only going by this.
Yeah, I know what you're going by, you answer my question. Am I not right, if we can't allow them because of the insurance, you might just as well shut the damn things down, so nobody's wrong.
No, what needs to happen is all needs to be made for what is right or wrong. And if it's wrong, stop it, if it's right, let it happen. I'm, I'm, to me, I'm, as mayor, I'm responsible to give you all the information that's available to me on what's right and what's wrong. Now, all you have to gotta do is say, we, we ain't gonna enforce it, let it move on? Or you kinda say, no, that, that's up to the board. It's my part as mayor to protect this city. And I'm telling you what insurance company said, and Perryville knows it, St. Jennifer knows it, at least that's what I'm being told. I have not talked to nobody, and offered that, but, but I know it's in their thing, and I know they got them as a thing insurance that we got.
Can I offer another?
Yeah.
Um, I got this, uh, from the person that got turned down yesterday, she sent me what they're doing in Chester. And, and they have like a, like a waiver, and, you know, and just kind of a part of it, you know. Hereby, the convenience referred to as releases from all liability, and then they signed a thing saying, you know, we will not hold the city responsible if we.
I had to sign one of those in St. John.
Okay, is that what they're doing? Okay. I mean, we, I, I, I can try that, right, we don't have a city attorney, but I can just steal what they did.
They don't have it in their ordinance.
No, it's not, no, they're doing that.
They're gonna get out, got their ordinance, I mean, well, now, wait, I gotta go back, I didn't have nothing to do with this thing, so. But I thought they was made fun of.
Yeah, it was made between.
I can just push it together, that's why.
But basically, they all got the same thing, right?
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
If, if that works, I don't have a problem, I'm, I'm getting all that.
I'm pretty sure that when you go there, you have to sign a waiver saying that you don't hold the city liable for anything.
Well, yeah, point of order, regarding this stuff, there's, there's really three issues, I think, one is. Uh, the waiver that the individual signed. With, and the second is the insurance thing, the third is the board making a legal decision without the background to. To make it, because we're not attorneys. So, uh, as I understand it, when someone signs a waiver, yes, they're signing a waiver, but that doesn't totally absolve, um, of, of risk, or us of a risk, uh, with it. So if the city and your underwriters say you're at risk, you know, there's a, you do have a liability risk, which is really senior to everything.
I'm saying what you're saying, and I, but I know they don't.
And the other things that we're doing is we're just lifting things without, you know, everybody could be lifting something from another municipality. And you don't know for certain whether it will stand, you know, or will, will it stand up in court?
No, I don't want.
Because there is just.
One topic, we don't have a lawyer.
No, I understand that.
And we ain't got the money to get one right now, but we gotta get what we can, because when you got stuff like this, you need to get a lawyer's opinion.
Sure.
Now, I don't know if St. Jennifer and Perryville got a lawyer's opinion. Now, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, it's an assumption.
But I have no idea what they did. But we don't have a city attorney or prosecutor. It could be one and the same, or it could be two different people, but prosecutors we're gonna have to get sooner or later, or else we might as well adopt the city, so we can enforce the ordinance. And we sitting here arguing about an ordinance that we can't enforce right now.
Yeah.
We can enforce it. That's what's changing, I want them to enforce it.
Well, we can enforce it, I think, but everything, it gets back in line, and the departments do what they supposed to, and pave the way like they supposed to. And everything gets in line, the wait, and the overtime, and everything gets taken out. We eventually can get a sleep, but it ain't gonna happen today or tomorrow, we might get a part time for a while. But you gotta have prosecutors, you get one take of the week, you still gotta have prosecutors. Now, prosecutors are cheaper than city attorneys. I mean, that's more at work, you know, when I was a person, usually their rates are a little bit cheaper than getting a good city attorney for it. And sometimes we can get one for both. And it worked out pretty good.
And the reason that we're doing this is, A, people wanna ride these things, and B, you wanna protect yourself so someone doesn't get hurt, or if they do get hurt, or absolved of the risk, you know, from it. So, uh, when someone comes in, and they want to be licensed to, to have a sticker to ride this thing, they do need to, uh, you know. I guess sign a release for, for sure, and then additionally, they need to show that they have some liability coverage. Cause otherwise, whether they sign it or not, if someone, let's say someone hits one with a city truck or something like that, then. There are insurance that covers that driver.
We're gonna move on.
Okay.
But, um, if you, if, both make it, you gotta make it, you wanna go with the waiver, you're gonna leave it. There's language in here, so now, I'm gonna take some language out about insurance. But, you, you go out and yell and sign the waiver.
Let them sign waiver.
Because sooner or later, this is gonna come to a head in court, some way. There're gonna be somebody get killed, some kids get killed, the wrong person is gonna get hurt, and somebody's gonna sue somebody, and. And all these things are gonna get legal or illegal. But if they get legal, they're gonna be insured, nevermind, insurance coming in. So right now, I'm gonna say they're not insured. But this waiver, it's something to hang your hat on, but it probably ain't what the paper to put on. But, y'all wanna go with that?
Yep.
But you already ruled, all of us.
Go now.
You'll get the vote, that'll be in the ordinance next week.
Right, we're just working.
And you'll be able to vote on the ordinance, this all be incorporated in. This is just reviving this ordinance, not, there wasn't no way within it. Actually, we hadn't took anything away, we just added a few. All right, this number fifteen, now. No, let's go back up to thirteen. Uh, we need designate where these are gonna go. If we do get a police officer someday, he should be able to look up and know where to look for a dick out of that. There should be a uniform of war they put on the vehicle.
So, and.
Two stickers are made for the riders, lower side of the vehicle, or six of them. So, we gonna put them on the left bottom, right bottom, on the windshield, they say it's gotta have a windshield. They say you gotta have a roof, but see, that one of mine. A lot of them come out, John Deere, Guts for that, they'll be, that'll come out with roof, windshield's a nut, and I'm made for. You could poke one on them, but you don't buy one, and they don't put them on, but I don't care, I'm not gonna get one from my aunt, I don't plan on running them streets.
So, lower side would move to be placed on the lower side of the passenger's windshield?
That's what mine are. Lower passenger side windshield.
Yeah.
Or right.
Good office.
I mean, they should have to put them in one uniform, like, everybody should, one of them put them on the tailgate, one of them put them on the door, one, there should be only windshield of one location. I don't have a problem with it, if that, if that's the way, is anybody going along with that, or everybody?
Lower right.
Lower right, if you tell.
All right, lower passenger.
Lower passenger windshield.
That'll be in the ordinance next week, let me go over on that. Now, this fifteen, well, now, did I just see one up here, about?
Where's the electric?
Well, I feel a little bit.
What? You said the electric.
Yeah, on golf cart, you saying here, there's gotta be electric, you can't be gas.
Yeah, I, I got that, but it's on down back at, uh, nine to ten, golf cart, now they forget. But this ordinance here, there's electric. So we say just golf, golf cart. I don't think that, if they wanna run it on steam, I don't care. But, uh, I've had electric, to tell you, that's a good normal time, sleeping, some places make them a car solution, but most people got them now, they got big wheels on them, and. Mine's got a Yamaha engine on it. But all golf carts that I know of, I missed, they got them as modified or something else, they don't run about twelve, thirteen miles an hour.
Right here with the definitions.
When you take them up to the.
Oh, it's right up the back.
Oh, we.
It's in the definitions.
Oh, I, I missed that one out.
To eliminate the.
Yeah, I had that marked.
Eliminate the power source.
We did, uh. Right here on number fifteen, the only thing I would like to do. If anybody that violates these rules, oh, sorry about that, I missed that. Or anybody violates these rules. Or anybody violates these rules twice, first time you get a ticket, like, thing, but the second time they lose their, their privilege for to give of operating on our streets. If they get two violations, moving, I'm not talking about... Make, well, I guess we'd cover almost everything, because everything is pretty much fixed. But if they get two violations in one year, they lose that privilege for a year. Now, Chester, one of them had that in their...
Yeah, they got a, like, a, um, because after they do the inspection, they have like a place where people have to initial. Like, each thing about, you know, I understand, I gotta do this, I gotta do that, and, um, one of the things is, like, third one, the city may suspend or revoke your permit credit here under upon a finding that the owner therefore has violated any provision of this article. And they, they don't even say twice, they just say straight up.
Well, I don't think the first, I think that would be unreasonable. So anybody can get a violation, you, you're talking about stop sign, or you could get a fee. And which it shouldn't be, but I, I think one time is unreasonable. But the second time, they get a fine, but they get suspended for a year, no.
I don't got...
They get their business.
I don't have a problem with that.
Anybody else?
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, this one up here that says, must have two working brake lights visible distance of five hundred feet. And down here, ladies, they must have working signal lights. Why would they be visible the same distance?
What is that?
I know somebody, uh, the last page. Then, uh, they, some of them are according to some sources I saw, it's at the last page, I don't know that one. It's worth resigning by, by either, and they take a word, and... It's got four or five things, you know, much out of every room, but this is one of the checklist to get, um... But they just said must have working signal light. I've been told to, told where people put the LED where you go out there, and my signal light, I got a signal light, they work. Little LED light, so, if, if your brake light can be seen at five hundred feet, that should be the same light. Usually, that's a signal light too, or one that's invisible, that's what, I don't know about five hundred feet, that's a long way, but...
Don't worry.
But go to your cars and things are, usually a car, that's my way if you're in straight line. But I've heard a couple stories where they don't, when you don't specify, that they put a little LED on there and say, I got a signal light. They should be visible. So, that, that could just add it on number B, and, and signal light, and just do away with, uh, G, because that, you gotta have a signal light, you know?
So put G with...
Must have working signal light that could be seen the same distance. Because that'd be the same height above and everything, and that's what signal light, I don't know how they get them little ones to even blink with the pressure they got on them nowadays. I don't, I'm second mind, I don't mind going with signal, I got brake lights and taillights that come out on it. Okay with that?
It's a blind, though, together, yeah, it's... So they gotta have signal and brake, put them together, and B? Okay.
And must have a horn, must have a windshield, must have a roof, I still don't... I can't have a roof, I ain't got a windshield, no, no, I ain't got a barb. Mine could work, one of mine had a work video, spray in and stuff like that. Must have brakes, must have rear gear. I don't have no work. Is anybody got anything they want us to put on or take away?
Yep.
Well, they would have worked it up in the next regular meeting, and been on the agenda to amend them. If, if you wanna look through that, keep it in there, y'all? How long do you have in a minute? I don't know, what is law on privatizing now? When you first get them, are they called intermittent, or, or they're... I don't know.
For this?
No, after, when you...
When you get an intermittent?
When you first get your license, when you're sixteen, they have restrictions on how many other kids you can have in the car that are under a certain age.
Well, I guess it's number...
You can only be out between these hours unless you're going to or from work, stuff like that.
I just seen something, we, I just seen one here about nobody that drives, intermittent driver, like, should be able, anybody who passes under the age of eighteen in there, I just seen that in there somewhere. That's why I asked the question, and I don't know what two.
All right, number twelve?
Yeah, number twelve. I mean, it's in there.
That was number twelve, yeah.
Yeah. I get that, it's like fifteen, sixteen year old out there around, I don't know. Okay. Anybody got anything ahead of us? We all want a consensus?
Yes.
All right. David, you gonna draw it up?
I'm ready.
Put that in the next for me?
Yes, sir.
What's the next thing? Number twenty two. There you go.
What about the number seven? Meeting, uh, county, city, county board project.
This is the extension again that the county's board has to...
Okay, yeah, we got any amendments or things, um, yeah, we got a big complaint, and it's a just a file of complaints on one street. Has anybody looked at this, or got, I ha- I have not really got out and drove all this and see what we're talking about. And I haven't been met with the county yet. But they want to talk about it. Do you have any idea what they're at the difference, and I mean, what we're, we're getting involved in, and if, have you actually go around and looked at?
I have seen most of them. Some of them, like, the, the one right up here, going up Cedar Street. Cedar Street, right there. Somebody has put sandbags in it.
Oh, yeah.
And it, you know, it needs to be dug out.
Do you, as a property, just?
I don't know what it's about.
Well, I didn't get a judge, cars. Well, let me rephrase my question. Who in the hell let them do that?
Nobody let them, he just did, he's...
Yeah, let them do it, because they were done. You, if, if, put them sandbags in there. If you said then let them do it, then that's your fault.
I put the culvert in there, I did put in, but I didn't let him put the bags in.
I mean, this, you have said, you said let them do it, because they did it. Do we responsible for anything anybody does that you sit back and tell them to can't, or don't stop it, you let them? I think, I've never seen a sandbag ditch. Never have.
Because you, remember, that's been, that's so long. And we had, did tile up on that road, run a tile all the way down in front of our house. She was gonna landscape that, next thing I know, she burned that Williams, did something, and it ended up with a damn sandbag out of there.
I, what's in the ditch that we did, that you talked about, like, uh, we moved to there?
I'm talking about up the hill.
We talked, not only right.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah. Other first for the...
Who had that idea, you know?
The guy who's got that trailer, or...
That's it, guys.
Yeah.
He didn't wanna put them in there. I went to throw them down, he was putting, I knew where to take them. Somebody spelled my debt, but they can't do that. What a dog, you're gonna have to gather, this is the public debt. We gotta have this running today. This, this, and I'm gonna go take them out.
No, but it should have been stopped.
I did stop him. But he had someone in there before he knew about it.
But it was completed, he, he did the whole job for that, and I didn't know it. I didn't even know it, one day I drove, drove up to there and looked over there. What in the hell was that? A sandbag ditch. That's a sandbag with, with stopping water, and that's what it does.
It does, it messes it up.
It is a mess. But I also remember how much money was spent on that ditch there, uh, what's her name, and from her house, it's thirty. And that ain't nothing but a mess. Then we got, with a new thing, you can fill it back up, and then it's gonna get shit. Eventually, we're gonna have to dig it there, maybe rock and stuff, so that does get wet, and it gets salted. But that's it. I guess, is it on here?
I don't know if the highlight goes up far enough, it's...
It doesn't, it is a shoot on the right on Cedar.
Right, it should be up here.
Yes.
It should be up here, that I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, on the right, actually, from third, right, actually, behind city hall, up to here, trailer, and up to there. But I'm talking about, uh, uh, up here from, uh,
Down the road.
Maria Sheard's house to, uh, third, to, every right here. Pining all the way down there, the problem, that thing be burned off every fall. More, ninety ten, a nine feet problem, well, the only right side, what I call a barrel side, that need to be trimmed down and get the uh, uh, small branches and things out, or it can't wash. But unless you do something, in the fall, four or five times in the fall, you'll have to do something to them leaves, because there's no way that they can come down. I don't know if they were to burn them, or what you do, but... But the ditch is there, and that's a big ditch, and you get all the branches, and they work, the leaves can come down, but they kept fogging up and washing out. Like, uh, St. Mary's Church Road going out there. Them run down the rain, wash all them leaves across the road, you can't hardly find, you come in that road lot.
Yeah.
Down all the way up here?
I'm talking about going all the way out to zero.
Yeah, I see.
Before you get out of hill country, so tell you.
Get right down here, though.
Yeah.
If, if you remember, we had to put washing there a few years ago, it washed out so bad, it's taken the street. It was a bad ditch, we took some pretty rough there, hold it.
I, I'm gonna meet with the county, I talked with Joe Gaddy, we get with him, and go over something, but we gotta find some priority, all the things on each other. I don't know how much they're gonna do, I don't have no idea, but we have a major problem, and the problem being is you get so much help when you're working on the street, nobody lives on it. But that Franklin, that Franklin Road out there, which is Second Street. It comes, Second Street don't end at the curb, it goes straight to Franklin Road. And going across the bridge. But going back to the burn lot.
Oh, okay.
You, you dodge one hole when you hit two.
Oh, you understand.
Don't, don't dodge, go ahead and hit one hole. You don't hit two if you dodge.
I take stuff down, yeah.
Now, the county, it, it has, they're working on that bridge, to help them.
Oh, they got money from FEMA to redo that bridge, so it, it's in their priority, you know, to build that, so, I mean, I mean, but, but the bridge go to it is our property, the bridge is their property.
Actually, they got more state than we do. That's where their county, our county residents come out. But we use the burn bomb, and maybe we can get with the government and the county and the city, and maybe there are all these things that may be available. We can fix that road. But it, it is a, the county should be, should be involved in that, because that's strictly their act of... Indian Hill is impossible sometimes, so there's no other way out than that way.
Doesn't, doesn't our, I might be wrong, our responsibility to handle the bridge?
No.
No?
I, I don't wanna say no more.
I don't want it, I'm gonna put a new forward out there for it.
I know.
Okay.
We'll talk to later. They first went there. But that was our big city.
Okay.
And that. But we, that road, and, and I know I'm gonna get to it, because I know that pretty point his street paid, I know that they had, now, here's in the third street, one, two, three paid. And I can understand that, they're not bad roads, but they wanna pay. And then, I've already heard about Fourth Street getting paid, and I understand why, and not very many people live on it, well, it's quite a few people live on it. But it's still a street you, and then, it's easier to cover a street than it is to make one. It's cheaper. When you gotta wanna make it, so you gotta do something. I, I always said, if you can save a street, you better do that before you worry about nothing. Because before long, if you, if you don't save that and you go build one, then you're gonna have to rebuild it though, and twice, and hide it through the years. But that street's gotta be, it, it, it's almost impossible to go over it. And, but, then again, they're gonna be backing them big trucks down there, because that's the only way they got to get the rain out now. Right now, they park them on that street and bring their combine out, and that combine weighs as much as a big truck, but they drive it up there and dump it in a trailer this size. But the county has been keeping that bridge up. But it had a three thousand pound weight.
Yeah.
So I don't know, but it's something that gotta be looked at, we're gonna have to spend very much money, and it, it'd be on a patching, it's just too much.
Yeah, it'd be on that year's bill.
No, I guess.
We're gonna look at, I don't, I didn't even look at the budget on, could, yeah, how much money's that going? All they do, we'll get with the, maybe we need to get something with the, we'll get with the commissioners and see how far and how deep they can go, and we'll look at the project to see how much they wanna get involved, and the worst one we get, a lot of, and see the ones that we can't do with our stuff. We can do it on digging out and learning, with the tractor and the bucket and things. We need to look at the ones that we need the county equipment to get done, if we can do it, we'd be a lot better off to look at something that we can't do. And I think the county's considering it, but, well, we're gonna have to get moving on it, because time's gonna be running out. But we're gonna have to look at Second Street. We just, one on the bottom here, they just got a whole quack go out, and, and you see there, is there two, two gravel streets over here?
Huh?
Is there two gravel streets, Church Road and, uh...
We got three, we got Wyatt, Third, and...
Well, yeah. Well, we blacked out down through the corner to a turn to, I forget name of that street down there, I know what it is. There is a street down there.
Well, yeah, it turns into another streetway.
And then go to the vault, and then down the white side, and it was named after me, and named after my brother, my son, he did that there at the time.
Okay.
Well, anybody got, let me see. Anybody got anything they wanna add, or say? I just did a special meeting, that's not open to the public at this time, I mean, I got problems, but I might got something to wanna say, but it was just called for this person coming. Anybody got anything? Most of the journey, good night.
I'd love to do it, yeah.
One second.
Want to make that out there?
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
Now, we oughta be going in close attention for a little bit.